Going to call this meeting to order at 7:08 please. First of all, I was supposed to introduce Ashley Dion from the Comley School Committee. She's our new member at Frontier. Ashley, welcome, but Ashley's not here, so, but everybody knows Ashley's going to be on the board with us. Second review of minutes from May 14th. Any questions about the minutes?
The minutes.
That Judy does a great job.
My little correction, I showed it to Judy.
I made the note in the minutes, don't worry. Funds may be used from the school choice line to pay the invoice if needed. That $50,600 for the minutes plus.
Okay. Do I have a motion in a second?
Yeah.
Second. All in favor? Mark, it's your turn.
Already.
Getting towards the end.
Right. On the brass taxes.
Yes.
Common sense. So yesterday I sent you the expenditure report through May. Through May, there is $444,553 remaining or 4.4% of the budget. The change from last month's budget remaining to this month's was $12,780. And so basically at this current level of spending, we're going to have budget money left over at the end of the year. As I mentioned in the prior school committee meeting, the overall budget expenditures and spent transportation was $28,885. That's function 330. It's increased by $15,000 due to a change in placement, but that placement is a school choice placement, so it will be reimbursed in June with the true-up that everybody doesn't like to work for.
Is that the one that we get from the other towns and all those things?
Yes.
We don't actually get the money in June when we get the money.
No, it'll be in June. Well, it'll be in July, but it'll be June.
Well, it doesn't show up in a black suitcase out front, if that's what you're talking about. It's about how much we get and the numbers you never see.
It shows up as an ACH payment in the school's account. Last month, the overall sub-function, 2325, had a positive balance of $7,000, but as I reminded everybody, it's a line to watch. Continued outages, expenditures have exceeded the overall budget by $1,184. Also, there was a long-term sub hired for math teacher at the end of May, which resulted in an encumbrance of expense of $10,544. This is additional expense to the district, but it could be absorbed based on the remaining funds that we are projected to have. One of the larger lines with a negative expenditure is building general repairs, which $65,56. This includes repair of the library air conditioning of $15,600, quote expense for generator of $8,300, various year-end repairs that Bob's getting done, and a reserve for updates to the exterior door entry systems of $24,100. These expenses could be charged to school choice, but based on current spending and where it looks like at the end of the year, it looks like the overall budget can handle the expense of the repair line. So that being the case, it doesn't make sense to transfer the expense to school choice unless the overall school budget could handle it, and that doesn't look like it's going to be the case in June.
Anybody have more? Bob, go ahead.
We get an encumbrance here for $20,000 for expense file storage management. Are we going to spend that? Is that something for the work you're doing?
That was an open PO that was set up. Yeah, eventually we are going to charge the expenses to that line.
We've got expenses, more expenses coming in.
No, I think we're done now.
No, so that's originally.
That was the money.
Right, between Dr. Carey and Patty, they were talking about the file transfer and how they were going to digitize and everything. Instead, what we did is George and I were able to find some space in the building, bought some shelves, hired a local moving company, we brought the files over, and my staff's going through them at a pace. So we've saved $18,000.
I believe you. But what I'm trying to say is that no longer has to say is an encumbrance because there's no more outstanding.
That's right.
Okay? That's good. So that's another $18,000 you can add to that number at the end that you have if we need it.
Bob, that was a good catch.
Something like that.
Some of the signed warrants over this one.
We haven't got that far yet.
We got the tech stipends for $5,000, and you don't have anything encumbered in that. This is your fault.
Now you got them going. Student gets one answer right, and all of a sudden he raises his hand every time.
That's exactly it. Bob, when you have a question, can you tell us what page you're on so we're not...
It's on the second page above the $56,000. $5,000. It says salary tech stipends. Now, we pay some stipends to technical people, and have they been paid or have they encumbered, or should that be encumbered?
Well, I guess we'd have to look and see. I'm not familiar with what that actual payout is. I can go back and see if last year it was paid out, but...
And who it was to?
Yeah, who it was to.
Well, I just want to make sure it gets done so we don't have to come up with an old bill in July or August. Okay? Maybe down further. You've got $11,500 there, and it's stipends curriculum development. $11,500 left.
We use those at the end of the year.
Yeah, there's going to be, there's a curriculum development happening.
That needs to be encumbered.
Well, it happens in the month of June. Those were the things that we pay teachers to come back the days after school. Sarah runs this. Sarah Mitchell runs this portion, but we pay the teachers to come back and do curriculum writing and development.
I just want to make sure.
Honestly, it hasn't been even submitted yet, but you're right.
It's part of the $444,000, Bob.
What I'm trying to say is if you think you've got $400,000, and all of a sudden you find you've spent $11,000 here, then it should have been encumbered because it's planned to spend.
Maybe we don't know how much that's going to be total. It might not be the whole dollar amount.
Anyway, there's some other bigger ones we'll just skip down to. On page three, you've got $63,062 in salaries. SETL, what is that supposed to be?
Special Education Team Leader.
Know what it is?
Sure.
Yep. But there's nothing been spent in it all year. So the salary for that position has been run through a different salary already?
Yeah.
It has to be.
Yeah. I'll take a look and see what that would be.
I would probably just look at all those big numbers to see.
Well, this is another item for $5,500 for expense speech therapy, SBC professional. Looks like, did I do that one? Yeah. For $5,500 bucks, sitting there, nothing's been spent, nothing is encumbered.
We probably need...
But that's an expense line item, so that's not a salary, but they may not have used it this year, so we can see what that is.
And then there's...
What page, Bob?
I'm going to get on page four.
Okay.
And we're going to go down inch and a half, so $14,878. That is salaries classroom assistants. You've got some money encumbered. Is that going to take, encumbered, is going to take care of all that stuff?
Yes.
Okay, so the $14,000, almost $15,000 is going to be left over at the end of the year. Then there's the $21,000, down two or three more from there, and that is...
Alternate.
Alternate instructional assistance. You've got encumbered at 3703, and you've got $21,000 sitting there. Is that going to be left over? Yep. Okay. And then down further, about inch and a half up from the bottom, $10,859. And it's expense professional development teachers. Now, that's the money that's in the contract to date, and that's going to get split with those that are qualified. Is that, if I understand it right?
Usually the professional development, correct if I'm wrong, that they have to submit in April or something like that for the remaining money if no one submits for it, right?
They have until May 15th to submit, or else it goes back to the general fund, so that's the remaining money.
So nobody submitted.
They did submit.
And they're still going through something, so they're still doing, so the extra money that has been allotted to teachers for professional development, they're still in the process of processing those POs. So some teachers have, because they can claim, they can get up to $2,000.
Yeah.
So some teachers are still, so those are still being processed.
So right now, but that would be where that encumbrance is right now.
Yeah, all should be.
That's why there's a large number, that's why there's a large number of encumbrance right there. That's the $10,000 that's remaining.
Oh, that would be remaining, okay.
That's how I'm reading it.
Oh. I'm just, oh, you know. Then we got payroll down mentors, mentor stipends for $3,550. You haven't spent any money on it at all. Three things down. Couple that. $3,550.
Do we have mentors in the high school?
The question is if those have been cut. Is that coming out there?
All the stipends just got signed. The stipend forms, that's just being submitted.
So they have to be paid yet.
They have to be paid yet.
Yep. So they're still coming.
Okay, we're going to skip page five this far.
We do have an idea what you're talking about, Bob.
Oh, sure. These are good.
No, this is, we get on page seven. I think it's you have the institution issue. You've got regional transportation, you're going to have 27 grand left. Does that include all the encumbrances and everything else on regional transportation?
Yes.
So there'll be 27 left, right?
But that line overall that was going to, spent transportation is...
Well, I realize that, yes. We're going to go to page eight.
You didn't ask about the food service director, Bob?
We talked about that last week.
I'm just trying to catch up on you. Don't poke the dog.
I've got a circle button, I'll go back to it. Everybody knows that. Anyway, when you get over onto page eight, you've got $51,000 left here for the heating and fuel account. All the bills are paid?
I'm not sure if Junes are paid yet. We might have, I'll double check and see, but I can't imagine it's going to be large.
Okay. And then there's $24,000 in the electric account, down inch later, the bottom one, and the bills are all there?
Again, I'll double check, but I think we probably just have Junes left.
And then we got utility, water and sewer, you've got $13,850. Is the new sewer bill in there in Southern?
I would bet it's not. Those seem to lag from what I saw, so I'm thinking that's probably not going to come until after the fiscal year.
Well, they sent the bills out two weeks ago. It can happen.
Let me check with Paula.
We got a monster.
If that went out two weeks ago, I'm going to guess it's probably not as big.
Hey, may not be two weeks, it's a good seven or eight days.
And it's definitely not in there for seven days.
Then I got down here the Medicare, for social security, Medicare tax. You're carrying $50,370. Is that accurate? And if it's that much there, something changed with our payroll. Is that true that generated by, based upon our payroll from last year, with some sort of Patty plug figure?
Right.
So if we didn't lay anybody off, and made a lot of money, it wouldn't be...
No, but at the time, the budget was probably put together last February. You had, probably had people leave during the end of the year. Other people hired at lesser rates, so that, you know, the Medicare rate might be a little bit higher based on what the original budget was built on.
I doubt it's $100,000.
Think Patty.
What?
Think Patty.
Well, there's not $100,000.
Oh, it's $15,000, yeah.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, anyway, then the last one is health insurance again. You're saying we're going to have $94,000 left in it. Is that a true figure? Or are we going to have it? Because you've got encumbrances of $223,000, and I asked you already if the May bills that are on the warrant tonight are already included. You say they are, so I would guess that $94,000 is going to be left over.
It looks like it. I took it, I actually took it, I figured you'd be asking about this one. So I actually took a look at last year and what was budgeted, and there were 12 bills paid, and each bill comes about somewhere between $106,000 and $110,000. So in totaling them up, it looks like we would have, based on what the payments are, between $94,000 and $97,000 left. Now, last year, I noticed at the end of, at the very end of the year, there was a true-up done. There was an adjustment done at the end of the year for $85,000 for prepaid insurance. So I need to look into that and see what that is, but if that needs to be paid at the end of the year, there's going to be $97,000 for that.
That was a screw-up that we had to correct.
That was only $60,000.
That was the oddity thing that Scanlon...
That was $60,000, wasn't it?
Yeah, part of the fact that the way we were doing it, we weren't doing it properly. So that's why we came up with the money last year, August.
Then based on the anticipated payments for June, which we don't have yet, it's going to be about $94,000 to $97,000 left over.
Okay.
So Bob, when you're going to be our warrant signer in July, you'll have to get an email and send it to everybody how you made out with the July, with the June bills, if you don't mind.
Would you like me to take out the machine and dig?
Well, either have one of your grandkids help you do it or something, maybe. Next time, next time I'm looking for spare chains at the bottom of the sofa cushions, you're the guy I'm inviting over.
Anyway, I picked this up yesterday, and I thought there is, I was going to go through. I was 4:35 yesterday, and I went home and served it with the pensive. Hey, it's better to have money left over than not.
Yeah.
I can remember 35 years ago, there were people that held bills back, right? Because they were close, and they held them back. And then in August, they brought them to us as old bills, like they had just come in. Unfortunately for them, they initialled them in when they got them, and they were initialled in before June 30th, when somebody tried to push them through as late bills. That takes a nine, 10, 12, 14 classes. Billy remembers, he was there.
I do. Yep. Thank you, thank you, Mark.
The other thing quickly is I also included the through-May results of special revenue accounts, so that's school buildings, better bombing, circuit breaker, school lunch, athletic revolving, school choice. So if you look at that, you can see basically where we started, the revenues and expenses to date, encumbrances, and then what the current balance is on. So if you have any questions about that?
Yes, I do. Medicaid reimbursement. I know we've got a check, because I think Darius showed me the figure about three months ago, and I just want to make sure that before they finish on August 1st, or August 1st, that we make sure we get that, all that billing in, so we get our money. But did we get a reimbursement? Correct me if I'm wrong, $271,000?
Was it that much?
Or was it $246?
I know we, I mean, I went through those payments, yes, so I know I showed them too.
Yeah. I didn't write it down, but it's not listed here. I'm just wondering if the $274, it's not a circuit breaker, is that?
It shouldn't be, because that tracks with what circuit breaker is, if you look at what it does, what it's supposed to mean, but yeah, that's something I'll research, because after you and I just spoke, I went through the fund accounts, and I don't see a fund account for Medicaid, and I understand what you're saying, so we'll circle back. I'll talk to Darius in the morning and talk to Paula about whether the deposit app, because it doesn't pop up on the fund on reports, so it will require a little digging for that. Oh, I agree, yeah, if it's there, we want to have it tracked and reported.
The school lunch fund is in a negative right now. Do you think by the end of school that it'll be on the plus side?
I mean, it depends on how June goes. The thing about June is it's a short month, so that always tends, the shorter months tend to not do as well food service-wise. If you remember last month, it had like a $49,000 deficit, so it's caught up some with May being a good month, but...
I guess my question is, I remember doing it in the elementary schools, shouldn't we take some money from somewhere and try to zero it out? Is that different? We talk in elementary school.
You could pay the salary of the director out of the line item we have.
Right.
And that would make that money available, so that we'll keep a positive balance in there.
Because I'd rather see a positive balance on the school lunch fund than a negative.
But we have to at the end of the year.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Can't carry a negative balance, so we will be paying for it.
Some...
I'm looking for Pioneer.
But we're in a...
I'm looking for Pioneer, then apparently we can. It's called creative, that's cancer with a K.
So I just wanted to ask that question. Nathan, else, Mark? Any public comment? Any comments?
Well, I don't know where to ask this. Can I ask something or a public comment?
Go ahead.
They can reject you, throw you out.
Chairman recognizes the...
This is, there's nothing official yet, so I don't, it's really just more of a question. I don't know if it's a question for Darius, a question for George, or it's a question for really all of the committee. But I just picked up my daughter from soccer practice, who's going to be in seventh grade next year. Half of their team is in Hatfield. Hatfield has always struggled to gain a middle school squad, girls' squad, and they don't even have a JV team. So the girls that can make the varsity team, they play on the varsity Hatfield team. I guess with our own school, sometimes we have a girls' middle school team, sometimes we don't, and if we don't, they play on the JV team, and then there's two JV teams or something, I don't know. So anyways, I was asked to ask the committee what it takes, can a collaborative happen between schools, between districts, to have some of their, some of their girls play on our middle school?
Do it in hockey in some capacity.
Greenfield and Turner's had cooperative hockey. Pioneer, boys are playing football with Turner's, right?
Swimming with them.
Okay, yeah. Darius has the answer.
I have the answer, Dan. We invite Hatfield to join our district, so, but on top of that, the...
Several times.
You cannot, so the co-ops have to be done by the host school, because they do not have enough players, and that is not the case at Frontier. So we would, if we didn't have enough players, we could reach out to one of those schools and say, why don't you come join us? Behind the scenes, I mean, sometimes you're having conversations, you know, athletics are having conversations about numbers for next year, and so conversations are happening. It's not just like, we don't have enough, we go look around blindly, there's athletics having this conversation. The issue that Hatfield has is the younger grades, and the way the rules for co-ops work doesn't work for younger grades. You can't have a co-op for middle school and then have separate varsity teams. It's not set up that way. The MIA is starting at the top down.
Okay.
And so, yeah, they're...
So because they have a varsity team, they couldn't have a, they couldn't join us?
That has never been done, so that'd be something they should talk to their athletic director about, and then bring it to District F Board and see if there's anything they can do there, and, but there's, I, you know, I just, last night was my last meeting as Chair of the Executive Board for BBIBAC, and this is where we approve all these. I've never seen in the six years I've been on that board, anything has anything to do with except for varsity. You know, so, and then, you know, or, you know, or you point up middle schoolers to play on JV, so they can file, you know, people can file different exceptions. We don't fall under ETHA, because Frontier's a 7th through 12th school, so, but...
I've never seen, I've never seen a Frontier incorrect method, that we've never had enough to have a middle school team of 7th and 8th graders.
For girls? I know we've had boys.
For girls.
No, we've had both, yeah. For middle school soccer?
No, 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 I'm just saying, we've never had a problem with numbers.
We did, a couple of years ago, we had to combine, we had a boys' and girls' team. Remember that year? It gave me a hard time, and we still paid the coach. These facts, I don't need to bring up.
Sorry.
But yeah, the, that, but anyway, so we've had some years where we brought them with the JV, because there hasn't been...
Not enough.
Right, depending on how some shifts have, lately that hasn't been the case.
Make sure your public comments are...
I don't know where to ask.
She's good, she can play varsity.
Correct.
Because she's got under the same principle.
Your, well, his kid's fine. His kid's a Frontier.
My priority is the Hatfield kids.
Tell them to choice into Frontier.
I know.
Next thing is, is that for administration, or is that for everybody?
Sorry, so non-annual salary recommendations, we need to go to executive session to begin discussions on. So we could do all the, we could do all the items prior to executive sessions if you want.
Regional warrant signings. Does this have something to do with summer schedule?
You have a handout that's printed sideways that said that this year on January 10th, Regional School Committee may designate one of its members for the purpose of signing payroll warrants and accounts payable warrants to allow the release of checks provided. However, the member shall make available to the board at its next meeting a record of such actions. So this is for over the summer, so we need to, if we want to, so desire to follow this new House bill, to allow us to not have to, to allow us to release bills, but remember before, we had to have a bunch of people sign up to come in, so everybody signs it. You can elect to have one person to do it, and then have that person report back in September.
We get jammed up with the audit every year because of this, so if we can avoid that item in the audit by doing it this way, then...
I'm going to appoint Bob Decker and Judy Pierce as an alternate. You got your vote answered.
I think you can appoint. I think I wrote a vote that you wanted to change the, is it change of practice? So I think it's voted, it's put in as a vote, but that would be...
We put it in as a vote, you should take a vote.
It's a vote, in that way, because you're also changing practice, so you want to show, in dealing with finances, I would say you voted.
I'll make a motion to, a motion to appoint Bob Decker as our warrant signer in the summertime, and Judy Pierce as an alternate.
I'll second that.
Any other questions, or does anybody else want to do it? Yeah, Bob? Sure. All in favor? Menu vid window, whatever. Thank you, Bob and Judy, for being appointed.
The other, the next...
Sorry.
No, I'm taking over, technically, you're supposed to...
No, no, no. School committee chairs are meeting.
So, you know, I just had a conversation moments ago with the Deerfield Committee regarding this. There seems to be at times where I need to meet with the chairs to help set agendas, to help set direction on policies, not policies, but what we're doing at the next joint meeting, or what we're doing in the next round of school committee meetings. And rather than just have the chairs come together, which technically could happen, because, you know, there's not a quorum, I wanted to run it by all the school committees that I would like to start to do that, to, you know, help set agendas and to kind of set some direction on some things. One, which we'll talk a little bit in executive session, but another one being, for example, my evaluation's out there now, what are we going to do with it? So unless I come up with a plan and then present it and walk it to all five of the meetings, and then have all five miraculously vote the same thing, how to do my thing, I need to get the chairs together to kind of go through about how we're going to move forward with that. So basically, I wanted to bring people's attention, if people are okay with that. It's not really a vote, it's just kind of an FYI. I did kind of mention, I've seen in the past when the superintendent has selected members to be part of a committee without committee's knowledge of it, and I just wanted to make it more everybody's transparency about, if I'm pulling the chairs together, why is he pulling the chairs together? What's going on? But that's basically to set, you know, to set some of these joint meetings, the agendas, what's important, what they want to see happen.
How can we speed them up, that type, you know?
Yeah, and sometimes, I sometimes feel like in an awkward spot, where I want the meetings to be quick, because I'm pulling everybody out. I mean, I use the example of at the Deerfield meeting, that, you know, when we did the business director, the voting of that one, and there's other things I could have put on the agenda, but I was like, you know what, it's a last-minute meeting, I'm pulling everybody out and then keeping them there for an hour, but if the chairs were there and said, no, we really should handle that business then, we could have done that, you know, that kind of thing. So that's the idea behind it, so I wanted to bring that to people's attention and just kind of, it's not really a vote for approval, because it can happen, but as long as there's no real vocal objections, I think it's probably a fine thing to do.
As long as they don't make the decisions for us.
They can't do that.[1762.81] Everything will still come back to committees to discuss and.
Promise, I promise I will. And capital update?
So I wanted to start putting that on there because, you know, we, as you know, the capital plan was approved by all town meetings. However, Deerfield had contingent upon the vote to be dead excluded. And so that vote is coming up on the 24th, for those of you watching at home, and this is contingent on, so. Is there a score? If there was a principal in the bill, I'd send you to his office.
I know the information.
Okay, all right. Yeah, talking about deflating my ego.
That's a big vote, I hope you guys are.
Bob, do you know what the dollar amount is and what the debt exclusion is? Was it a 10-year?
Well, they just want to be able to exclude the debt and, and, because they don't want it to affect the tax rate. Because if you put in a half a million dollars, you say the assessment is a half a million dollars in one year, that would affect the tax rate. And it would cause, you know, they could probably get away with it, but they would rather not. They would rather have it excluded from the tax rate so they can hit it away with their base.
So I, I expressed my frustration to the, that they did, that they decided to set it up this way. Because what it did is, on-town meeting floor was voted, you know, by a large majority. It wasn't very close. However, who's going to go out for June 24th vote for debt exclusion?
The people that want to say no.
Correct, and you may not get the same, or people think that this has gone through, and who would vote not to dead exclude a short-term, a short-term borrow that we're looking for here of a small amount? When you really look at it, it's, it's 1.8 million dollars, but you take Deerfield's percentage of that, let's say, let's make it a pretty simple 50%-ish, you're talking about $700,000 over 10 years. That's not a large ask, and it's going into the same debt exclusion vote as the sewer system. And so, which is 11, which is $19 million. And so we're kind of being packaged together with the sewer bill, not to, no pun intended there. So I was just, you know, for those watching at home, it is a, a plan that's been two years in the making. If it doesn't get the debt exclusion vote, we'll be coming back next year. And, and that, you know, will slow, delay all the projects that we put on hold and take care of.
Bob Decker, if, if it's dead excluded, then they can't use CPA funds like for the track portion?
I guess that up to the, Conley can use their money or Whitley can use their money, and someone can use whatever money.
Well, how much money, you guys got CPA money?
We get an awful lot.
But if it's dead excluded, then you can't use your CPA money on it?
They can choose, we will assess the towns, their portion of the debt. So we're going to, the next year, and it's not next year, it's the following year. When we put our budget together, we are going to have cost of the school, cost of transportation, and debt. So we haven't had that in the last five years because we paid off the debt for the remodeling of this building. So they will then get that bill, and then they can decide, hey, we want to use CPA funds this year. Or B, we are going to add it to the tax rolls that will be dead excluded, or they can, maybe they have the money in free cash. Depending on, each town gets hit by a different number. The smaller towns, for the most part, can, the amount that we're asking for because of their percentage, can find the money within their operating budgets to pay for this over the 10-year period. Deerfield has a larger chunk, and because they have other, I think if they only had this and they didn't have the other things going on, they may not be as worried about the cost of it. Because it really isn't that, we talk about the overall, it's a lot of money, when you talk about the overall ask for, it's not, it's not that much.
But the 19 million that's going to be, have to be raised for sewer improvements is, is an awful lot of money. 25% of it's going to be assessed to all the taxpayers in town, and the other 75% is going to be put to the ratepayers. So those listed downtown, like this building, rates for the sewer charges for this building are going to go way up. They've already gone a lot, and they're going to go much worse. It's roughly 11.75 per thousand gallons of water.
The only thing I, I don't get with it, and I, I had this conversation with Trevor, is if it does get voted down, all it's saying is we can't dead exclude it. But it's still, the, the proposals already passed. So all it means is then, okay, it's passed, we can't dead exclude it, well, now we gotta maybe do a two and a half override or something.
My understanding is that the language was added to it, they added to the language that we put out to the towns. It said, this is contingent on the passing of a dead exclusion.
Why do they can do that?
I can't control the law.
So my, my question is that the warrant articles this year included no appropriation for the capital project. It just included the language approving of the project.
But see, the thing is, they had the right to call special town, the town meeting to talk about the vote that we took under the statute where we voted to incur the debt. And they had an opportunity to call a vote. They called a vote, right? And they called a vote, and when they passed the vote, they said, yeah, it's fine if the town will pass the debt exclusion.
But the debt exclusion only applies to debt. We're not asking for debt this year, we're not asking for dime one.
Basically, what I'm saying is, you probably asked the attorneys, and they were going to say, that's going to be a great big stop sign. Because the town voted not to allow simple occurring of debt. And they, they held a vote within the 60-day period. So we're sort of stuck between a rock and a hard place, and hopefully we get enough people out that they're going to support it. We can't spend any school funds to support it. It's got to be, you know, we can't.
But I mean, next year is the year, the first year we're going to be asking for money, probably. So you, so we have to.
Given the timeline, we will not be asking next fiscal year, it won't be for '21, we won't be asking money for '22, until '22. Because if you look at the timing of it, we're going to build the budget, so, but if this gets approved, the approval process to get the money, to get the bonding that we're going for, takes months. And so, so by the time we get this done, and I have a changeover facilities and changeover business manager, so there's the onboarding of that. So we're talking about, we will probably have the money set in hand, and I've learned to overestimate rather than underestimate, November, December. Then we're going to start looking to bid out some, we're going to figure out which one we're going to go after first. And then we're going to have to bid out some of the larger projects, let's, let's use the tracks, this thing is so connected to track, although there's a lot of other stuff attached to it. The track companies, I bet you in January are set for their summer. I mean, they're doing everything, they're doing colleges and major things all across. So we got, now, the actual bill from those things won't actually happen until the next fiscal year. So then we won't actually get that to assess the town until the following year. So that's why I was saying when we, when I was putting this to the towns, that it really is two years off. You know, maybe, and we have to spend enough to make sure it falls within our 10-year plan. Maybe we don't, if you don't look at the track and we look at, maybe we could get this, this area, the, the insulation and stuff above this, the infrastructure above here that's in there. Maybe that could happen and start in June, and we could get that first set of bills that would go. But again, the kids can't be here for the majority of these projects between, you know, the parking lot issues, this, the issue, we can't really shut this down for the amount of time it has to shut down the track. We're going to, we're going to have to figure out, because there's a lot of pricing has to do with, there's the time. You're, you're competing against all of their other, it's New England. You can only work on a track so many months out of the year. And so what are you going to do? What seasons are we going to affect? Are we going to affect football? Are we going to affect tracks? You know what I mean? You know, and I say football and all other sports that use that field. So anyways, there's a lot of kind of moving parts here.
The thing is, nobody's going to approve bonds if we don't have the debt exclusion.
If we don't get that exclusion, I think we will be contacting our attorney, and it probably won't be our current attorney, we probably have to have an attorney that follows, the finance attorney, to find out whatever our actions are, but my guess is we have to go back again. And then, to be honest with you, now that we're a couple of years down the road with those numbers, we probably have to go back with adjusted numbers. Because you've got to remember those numbers that we started with are from a year and a half ago. You know what I mean? That we said there are going to be some movement, then we got to kind of adjust, and so I'm not saying it will come out larger, but we have to look at it.
So they're only dead excluding one number of this?
There's two different things. One is going to exclude the $19 million, so that can be dead excluding for the sewers and then for the frontier.
Are they two separate?
Two separate.
And I asked them to change the wording to be clear, because when we voted the, when we voted at all the warrants, it said the total amount that we were asking for, the 1.8. But when you talk about debt exclusion, I asked them if they could pull out exactly what Deerfield's responsible portion of it. Because they're not dead excluding 1.8, they're excluding probably around $700,000, you know what I mean, of what, what their responsibility of it is for. So they said that they're going to do that, I have to work with Trevor on the select board there as well.
That may be too late because the wording is already.
I asked that a month and a half ago. So if they change the wording so that they just make sure that it was clear.
It's posted, but I didn't read it.
We can ask Trevor tomorrow then.
Well, if it's already posted, then we can go look.
And if, if, if it fails, you can get right back on, go do it, get on the warrant in September or there, in a, a meeting where you're.
Your fault.
Yeah, and, and you're much more likely to succeed then, because then you'll be in the general election in November.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of, I don't, I'm, I'm hoping that cooler minds prevail in the sense that we get it, that we get it the way we should get it, and we get it with that vote on the 24th. I mean, you want to start, we could start talking about that, but we can just vote again to take on debt, and then towns all have to have a special meeting if they want to stop us. You know what I mean? And so you talk about doing things like that, they've already got a vote, and we could justify it by saying we already have a vote in open town meeting of approval. But that's one of, that's, let's leave that discussion for if it is failed. I mean, there's a lot of different, or we line it up for town meetings for fall. You know what I mean? If you do, you know, if we do special time meeting in the fall, or, or we package it all back together, get that subcommittee together, and we put a new package together for spring of next year. I mean, those are kind of our different, but there's a lot of different things we can do.
Hopefully it'll be.
I, I'm hoping it's.
Are you home that week?
Uh, I am, but I'm going to the, going to the beach. I'm going to do, I'm going to do an absentee ballot.
The question I have is, it appears that we've got roughly $200,000, $300,000 in current budget that's not, not encumbered. And put, we usually in June decide on certain projects we want to do for the summer. Is there something that we could allocate $45,000 or $50,000 for that we could knock off ahead of time? Assuming that there might be a problem.
So Bob brings up a good point in the sense of, okay, so we're looking at, we're going to be looking at, what do we have for excess? Then what are we looking at for E and D when we get that? And then we see part of our E and D, we've always been starting to, not always, we've recently been, our kind of our mentality is a percentage to drop down the assessment, a percentage to knock off some of our capital improvements and not go back to towns for, and a percentage to hold for emergencies. Part of our, we don't want to, and we can talk about this more, and I can prepare it for a meeting, but we don't want to go knocking off parts of the capital plan that we've gone to the towns for, because that's only part of the total list. And what we said is we're pulling out all the small things and only putting the big things on the list. We have a, we have a laundry list, if you remember that, remember that laundry list, of small things that, up to $30,000 that we could do. To go to, the second part of the question is, what can we do this summer? It's, it's tough at now, June 15th, to get things done for this summer, especially when I got Bob leaving in the first week of August. So, you know, we have things lined up that were amongst the elementary schools that are getting taken care of, some of the, the general kind of things that we're fixing in the building. But, you know, I'm not prepared tonight to come back with that new things, but I'm, because I'm kind of in a tough spot with the changeover there. So we might, you know, when we get to what we have for excess, we'll look at our E and D, and there might be some things that we can pluck away at the middle of next year during vacation weeks.
But we could encumber before the 1st of July without having to take an E and D after the 1st of July. If we knew we had, if, if, if the vote fails, and we know it's going to be six or eight months before you get it straightened out, it might be some of those, something we might want.
But some of them have to go out bid, we may not be able to get it done this summer.
I'm not talking the great big stuff, but I'm talking.
We do have a long, I mean, that, and that's with that, so what we need to do is early next year, well, after this thing, I, we'll, I haven't thought that much forward in the sense of failing, because I'm a positive person. But we would probably get, we'd get the building, that, that, the capital improvement subcommittee back together. We would talk about next step, about looking at the different things, and then make a recommendation, I imagine, back to the Frontier Committee about how to move forward. You know, and then also that, that same subcommittee, we said, would help oversee those other projects that we would be going after. I'll use E and D right now, but any other, you know, other excess funds that we said is part of our programming is we want to do more projecting ahead. These are what we are asking, there's no surprises what's coming down the pike for repairs, more transparencies, everybody can look, you know, I want to be able to have that list, everybody can look at. We knew the next three things that are coming are going to be this, this, and this, and as the money comes up, we know, unless something breaks and it moves up the list, you know, that kind of stuff. But in the past, it's been kind of this, I know it's been more of a, hasn't really been a surprise, but it has been as transparent as it should be.
So I remember in the committee, there was one night when we did talk about the problems with midsummer elections in general, and then how the town meeting schedule sets us up for bad attendance, low voter turnout, elections, which are historically really difficult to win if you're the side trying to spend money. And, and like, part, part of what we should be thinking about is, is exactly stuff like that. You, the, historically, you have a much greater chance of passing these things if you're in the general election when all of the voters show up, which is November, which means you have to be in the warrants for the September town meetings, which means that we can't meet in the way we normally do in September and have it approved or anything approved in time. We're, we're structurally not capable of moving that fast. So I don't know what the solution is to that, but if you're going to be on a September warrant, which is, I would, I would hope we try to make that happen because the chance of success improved if we make that happen.
Well, we may have to meet during the summer. Nobody likes to do it. Years ago, it was always done that way.
Yeah, because you have, again, we're going down this rabbit hole of what ifs, but.
I mean, this is set up to fail, this is set up to maximize the chances that whoever was responsible.
Who's the spearhead on the debt exclusion, Skip?
Well, they excluded the debt when they did these major renovations here before.
But it's also, it's also fitting in with their current, they have a big sewer price tag, and so they, putting the two together may not have been, you know, may not have been, you know, they're not looking at, may not look at the failure rate of it, maybe they're looking at this will help pass it. You know, I don't know, I, I don't know what the, what the mindset was. It didn't have to be set up that way. They could have approved it and said, hey, do you want a debt exclusion? And everybody's going to say, who's going to say, oh, no, I'd like my taxes to go up permanently forever. So that's the part that kind of caught me when it came through it, but it's like, no, they legally can do it. And I called the attorney at the time, and I said, no, legally they can set it up that way, so.
I think Carolyn's strategy was, she wanted to get the appropriation passed and tell me, because she was hoping that the interstructure, interstructure bill from Congress was going to pass. That hasn't happened, and it's likely not going to happen at this point. But she was hoping to get on the gravy train because ways and means, Richie Neal from Springfield's on, McGovern's on the Rules Committee, and somebody else is on something else, and she thought it was going to be a cakewalk.
No cake, no walk.
Okay.
Well, we'll, we'll see what happens on the 24th, and if it doesn't go our way, we'll have to, we'll have to talk about what our next steps are, right? That's just.
We need to get the committee together, Bob, we need to talk to the committee right after the vote or something, definitely need to build that first step, the, the capital committee.
Yep.
Get the building committee together.
We could, yeah, we could get the capital, the cap, we're calling the capital committee and the building committee or two. It probably should be called the capital. We'll have to figure out what the name of it's going to be moving forward, but that committee could get together and then help, help decide, you know, rather than pulling the joint meeting together, get together, kind of strategize the different options with those, with that, I'm kind of thinking out loud here, so, you know, shut me down if I stumble, but. We can look at the different options, also get the research, rather than getting the full committee together and say, what if, what if, what if? I take notes, have to go get legal guidance and that kind of stuff, this smaller committee could do that. And look at all those different things, can you talk about whether how we go to get on a fall warrant or do we force a fall warrant? You know, because this committee also has that power too, you know, so it's, you know, yeah, so, right. Expect that.
Okay. Let's get done with the reports here. I have no reports, how about the collaborative?
Collaborative, last week I went to the graduation of the Hat program. We had one graduate from Frontier. It was a nice program. New state senator made a nice speech. It was a nice day, and I slid her drove, and we went.
Cool.
And Bob and I both left the Frontier, graduated 55 years ago.
Well, that was nice.
What the heck of a graduation?
Hampshire Educational Collaborative, and they've always called it Hat.
They have a heck of a graduation.
I mean, it was only, it's probably 15 students.
Don't be that person.
Big students, you know, but it takes care of my needs, my children. It's important because we couldn't run that program ourselves here, we don't have enough of students to do it. Other than that, the deputy director is leaving, the human resources person down there is leaving. leaving also. They're gonna be looking for a new deputy director or something like that, and they're looking for a human resources person.
It's a good job for you, Bob.
I know, I know, I want to work. Not that hard.
Thank you, Bob.
I think they got somebody for human resources, but the other, they're still trying to figure out what, how they want to go forward.
George?
I just have a brief report. We have three. We did, we also had graduation. We graduated more than HEP.
Yes.
Possibly through one of them.
Well, that particular student graduated from here at the same time.
Oh, all right.
So, they get a, they get a French report.
All right, there you go. So, I've got three, I've got three items. I just want to let you guys and the audience, make you guys aware that we're planning on making available, we have an online payment platform called Family ID that we're currently using for our sports fees. We're looking to move it to, I'm, I apologize, we're using it for, paying for lunch right now. We want to put all of our athletic fees on the same platform, as well as our testing fees, like AP testing and things like that as well. There'd be like a slight, I think they chart, that's like a 2.9%, like an interest fee if you pay using their system, but we think it'll be a lot more convenient than having parents or give checks to kids and having the kids bring them in and whatnot. So, we're hoping, we're hoping to make headway with that next year. I'm working with Scott Hall on making that happen. Second item is Polly Batten's gonna be coming in August, doing PD for our staff. She does primarily PD for behavior management, so, we're inviting all of our staff to come to that. There'll be an invitation sent out probably tomorrow, so they'll be able to come for that. And then, just to highlight the fact that our boys' baseball and girls' softball teams are currently in postseason play, I want to just wish them congratulations and good luck this week. Last day of school is this Friday. We've got a half day, and then we come back. Staff comes back on the 27th, and everybody else comes back on the 28th. There you go.
And I forgot to say, but graduation was really nice the other night. I think I handed out, I can't remember, on about 88 diplomas?
94.
92.
I thought you said 97.
The paper was...
92, I think 92 were there.
92 were there, and a couple chose 94.
But it was really nice, the weather was almost perfect, as it was hot with a suit on, there was three or four of us with suits on, and as that sun went down, it cooled off like real quick, and it was, it was really nice evening for graduation, so, it was really nice. Darius, what do you have, sir?
Just kind of the updates are, we're currently interviewing director of facilities. You all have my, the superintendent evaluation I sent out. Please get those in. If you have any problems, let me know. This has to do with Unit 38, the summer meeting had to do with them, but then, we also may have to have a summer meeting based on the capital improvement. I just want to talk a little bit about the summer administrative tree, what we're doing on administrative level. We have on the 20th, our first retreat day, where we're gonna concentrate on our district goals and develop our professional development plan for the entire year, both with the elementaries and the secondary, and also look at our different areas of focus. As you know, I sent out a, we're also gonna review the survey that I sent out, that you probably all saw, they sent out the families, and look through that data as well, and help, use that to help apply to our goals. This next day, we are doing a workday, which we're working on aligning a lot of our procedures, not policies. You guys kind of, we align all our policies up here, but our procedures, forms, to those kind of things amongst the different elementaries, and also, secondary is a little bit tighter in some of those areas because of, there's additional administrators, but when you're a single principal, and, you know, is your field trip form up to date? So, we're gonna kind of work to, we're not gonna kind of, we are gonna work together on that. And there's already quite a list of stuff that we're gonna work on, that the principals are putting together collaboratively in planning. On the 27th and 28th, we are, we were bringing in the curriculum management solution. This is the, this is a work, this is a group that Sarah has done her, Dr. Sarah Mitchell, who's done a lot of her, she goes out and does audits of major school systems with this group, and she was going to bring them in to do a training of, as it was, because right now it's being put on hold, because the person who's going to be with us has come down with an illness and can't come to present. And so, we're trying to, right now, rework what we're gonna do on those days and have that person come later. So, I'm still presenting it, because we're eventually gonna go, use this group to really look at evaluating our curriculum, and then also look at classroom instruction and where we need to go to improve. You know, we do very well, our teachers are excellent, but we have to constantly figure out how we're gonna move that needle to improve every year. So, that's what's going on there, and then that's it.
Okay.
I have another question. Eighth grade field trip to Washington, does that still happen in Michigan? Because the parents aren't here again, is it?
So, and so, I wasn't here at the end of the year last year, do the parents usually here at the end of the, at the end of the year?
So, part of the back-to-school packet is, is the welcome, and then kind of lays out what's going on with Washington, you see? So, nope, it's...
I have a question.
Yes.
Do you want to be a chaperone this year, Bob?
You know, I have a very nice granddaughter who's going to be here this great next year, and I don't think she's gonna want to grab me on a trip.
So, basically, the rule out of that is, they get stuff in the back-to-school packet, and then, their first meeting about it is, we combine it with part of open house. The eighth grade sets a time, please come at this time to grab, it'll be the first discussion of DC.
Cool.
So, it's coming.
So, next on agenda, we're gonna be going to executive session, so, you want to pack up and leave? George isn't being invited?
Yeah, George is invited.
And Allison, you could, I guess, say goodbye to you, I guess?
So, you may come back to regular session for vote, though. So, you have to make that, make that known.
But if you want to, I'm not sure how long it's gonna be, if you want to stay, she could stay and wait, or...
It's, they can stay and wait for...
Are you gonna be voting on anything?
They're going to decide if they are going to take action on an item.
Okay.
Which, I mean, basically, he can tell you what it is, because they're gonna talk about union and non-union salary schedules, so, they would make a decision on how, what they're gonna do.